Mrs. Funco, will Dr. O'Carroll could you do that, please?
Dr. Portolino?
Here.
Mr. Daughtry?
Here.
Mrs. Fano?
Here.
Dr. Modra?
Here.
Mr. O'Bryant? Mr. Rappaport?
Here.
Ms. Suckerman?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Oh, yeah, come on my list. Mr. Arina?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Estes?
Here.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance, please.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montpel Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, that was posted at the Montpel Township Municipal Building, all Montpel Public Schools, the Montpel Public Library, the Montpel Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the board's official newspaper, on January 8th, 2022.
Thank you. High school reps, who would like to go first?
I'll start with the sports update. So, the boys' basketball team is on a great stretch, winning five of their last six games. Perhaps the biggest of those came on Friday night when they took down Boone 95-66 in the first round of the county tournament, and they will advance to the next round and will play Del Barton on Saturday. The girls' team has won their last three games and also put up a great performance in the first round of their county tournament. They defeated Dover 52-17 at home, and they will play host to Mendham in the next round of the tournament. Despite losing in the finals of the Morris County Tournament, the bowling team put up record-breaking numbers in pins in the ball-playing round and proceeded to set the record again in round one. So, congratulations to them on a great performance, and we wish them luck the best the rest of the way. The hockey team picked up their elusive first win over Gil St. Bernards two weeks ago by a score of 5-2, and they followed it up with another stellar performance on Saturday, taking down Morris Catholic 4-2 behind strong performances from juniors Matthew Crowell and Matthew Jafari. They will finish their regular season this Saturday against Gil St. Bernards. The wrestling team took home, or took their four-match winning streak into the Morris County Tournament on Saturday and had a great performance. Aaron Curzer, Derek Turdano, Justin Ciliata, Carl Monaco, and Mo Gaver all had top-five finishes and led the team to an overall top-five finish of the tournament, and they wrestle tonight against Mountain Oaks. The winter track team saw great performances at their Morris County Tournament with Oliver Zhang finishing sixth in the shot put, Alex Teal finishing fifth in the 1,000 meter, and Robert George earning a gold medal in pole vault. And finally, congratulations to the swim team on a great final meet of the season, first Roxbury a week ago. Highlights included multiple personal records, first-place finishes by varsity swimmer Hayden Adifier, and a first- and second-place shutout in the 100 Butterfly by varsity swimmers Laura Agarvinoa and captain Sammy McKep, Michael Kogus. So, a strong finish to their season.
Thank you.
So, today was the fourth, the final day of midterms. This concludes the midterm season, and with that, tomorrow brings the end of the second marking period. Tomorrow, the high school will be having a day zero just before changing to our regular bell schedule. Some post-midterm distressers that students have in this point have been looking forward to are the after-school movie this Friday, February 4th, hosted by the ICC, which is now provided, and the article meeting on Wednesday, the secondary launch. As we look into the third marking period, we can look forward to the AMC testing competition on February 9th, eighth-grade orientation February 10th, and the closing of schools for present day on February 21st. Also, tickets to the weekend next week for our annual spring musical, opening on March 3rd at 7:30 p.m. TMTS Theater Company will bring us their performance of Grease. Performances will continue on March 4th and 5th at 7:30 p.m., as well as on March 6th at 2:00 p.m.
Thank you, guys. Any questions of our reps? You did a great job. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Superintendent, report.
I just wanted to call everyone's attention to the update on the district goals, which is included in the agenda. There's a link there. In particular, our first goal, which has to do with the demographic study. We have a meeting scheduled next Tuesday, February 8th at 7:30 p.m. in the auditorium, where our demographer, Dr. Gribb, will make a presentation and actually be able to answer some questions about the demographic study. So, I would invite folks to attend that meeting as well. I'm not going to go through the rest of the goals. I mean, the updates are there for folks to read at their leisure, and, you know, because we do have the audit presentation scheduled for this evening, we will devote our time to that.
Thank you, Rob. Presentation, we have the auditor here, Rob, from Lord Trenton Higgins, here to give the, although it's not a final report, but we won't get that done until...
It should be in the next couple of weeks.
Next, will we get any state figures?
Uh, they came out late last week.
Okay. Thank you, Rob.
Uh, so Charlie alluded to, uh...
Can you use the microphone?
Uh, so what Charlie alluded to is a little bit of a unique audit season this year. Usually, we have your audit done in the fall. We actually did complete your audit in the fall. Normally, you would receive your reports, the statutory deadline to file your reports when the state is December 5th. However, this year, there's certain information that's required in your report that is provided by the state of New Jersey, relates to post-employment benefits. Though, that information that's required was not released by the state until last week. So, basically, they have extended that audit deadline from December 5th all the way to March 15th to be able to file your reports. So, normally, when I come through your presentation, you would have the report already, you would have been able to have a chance to redo it, but unfortunately, we can't formally issue the report until we have those numbers. So, those numbers just came out late last week, so we anticipate circling back to the reports and updating them with the new information and issuing the report. So, you should receive those copies in the next couple of weeks. So, this does relate to your June 30th, '21 annual audit. What I can say is that you get two, you'll get two reports from us. There's a comprehensive annual financial report, which includes all your financial statements, your required note disclosures, and in that, you'll get three audit opinions from us, which is basically the result of the audit. You'll get one on your financial statements themselves, one on your internal controls, and a third one on your state federal grant programs. In all three of those opinions, you receive what we call an unmodified opinion, basically the highest level of assurance we can give you. You basically start at that unmodified level, and if anything precludes us from issuing an unmodified, there's lower levels of assurance to give, but unmodified basically means a clean opinion, and there were no issues that point us not to issue that unmodified opinion. So, in all three instances, it's basically the most positive results. You'll also get the audit management report, which is a smaller report, which is basically the results of the audit. Very positive in that report is you have no audit recommendations issued, so there's no corrective action required from the audit, and that's a very positive. For a district your size, it's somewhat rare to have an audit with no recommendations. As Katenee could probably attest, we do a pretty thorough audit, although we don't look at every transaction throughout the whole year. We do do a pretty thorough audit, too, so to have a result from an audit with really no order recommendations, applying corrective actions is really a high one for this. Just to touch on the financials briefly without getting into too much, a very positive financial year from a fund balance standpoint, basically as the district collected all of their revenues and spent their appropriations. You had an increase of a little less than $3 million, about $2.8 million in total fund balance from last year. And really, where that amounts to is you have kind of three sets of money set aside where you have available funds. One is your capital reserve. So, at June 30th, you had about 4.8 million in available capital reserve. That goes to, can be used for any future capital projects of the district, either through your budget process, or the board can withdraw that money going into year by resolution to do a project that's in your long-range facilities. You also have a maintenance reserve of about 1.5 million. That's another reserve setup that's used for maintenance-type items, so not so much long-term capital improvements, but maintenance of your existing facilities. So, that's kind of another reserve that the state allows you to maintain for that specific purpose. And then, what we call your surplus, your unassigned fund balance, which is your, you know, kind of free money moving forward. You have about $4,500,000. That's an increase from last year. Basically, the state allows you to keep a, they put a maximum, they're not even keeping in surplus. That number was raised this year from 2% of your budget to 4% of your budget, so you were able to keep a little bit more money in your surplus, which will help you as you move into your next budget cycle. You'll have, you know, basically more money than you had at this point last year to help you set the budget or, you know, to use as, as the, you know, the budget. So, that's a two-year increase. The 2% went up to 4% for this year and next year, so there's no word yet on whether that's going to continue into the future. But all in all, you know, very positive years from a financial standpoint. You have your reserves set up at really a high level for your capital and your maintenance items. You have that increase in your unassigned fund balance to use for, you know, any kind of emergency that comes up, or like I said, for budget purposes. And to have no recommendations in your audit report is really positive. So, all in all, from a financial standpoint and from a, just an audit opinion standpoint, you know, pretty much that is positive as I could wish.
I was very happy to hear that there were no audit recommendations first. That's a biggie from the business office that everything is being done, even though I only do a sampling, or do quite a thorough sampling from what I understand. And also with the unmodified opinion, where there is no discrepancies in those three areas.
Right.
And then, the increase in fund balance for the maintenance reserve, capital reserve, and the free balance, and I would like to thank you, Rob, and I'd like to congratulate Katenee and her staff on an excellent audit report, and I'd like you to put that in the minutes, Katenee, I know you never do, but please put it in the minutes this time, okay? And do you have anything else to suggest of us, Rob, at this point?
Uh, no, that's about it, other than, like I said, in the next couple of weeks, you'll be getting hard copies of the two reports, which is your financial report and your audit management report, and then questions arise once you get those reports.
I know I ask you this question every year, but based upon the size of our district, compared to other districts in the, I mean, budget, I think we would have to agree that whatever is popular there is only if not at the top, right?
Yeah, sure, I mean, with no order recommendations, I mean, for a district your size, you know, I don't know the numbers, we do certainly quite a number of board of educations, but in my experience, I have a district this size with no order recommendations exists.
Again, I'd like to congratulate Katenee and actually the whole central office administrative team. Do you have some questions? Any questions of Rob, even though he doesn't have all the information, but I think we're in a pretty healthy financial situation by the present time. Would you agree?
Yes, I would. I'm looking at your reserves and your free balance moving forward, you're running certain more positive, more positive relationships.
Okay, I know you can touch with Katenee during the course of the year with income conferences and stuff, and we'd like that to continue because it's very helpful closing out the books.
Yep.
It is also, I know, very helpful to the...
And we prefer not to, because I'm sort of, I want to come in at the end of the year and have to, for a year or more to stuff, as we get questions during the year, it would be a, I think that's a surprise.
If there's no questions of Rob, I would like to thank you for coming, and Rob had a, Rob had a problem there for a couple of years where he was sick one year and he couldn't make the next year, but could have seated then, Rob. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm a good one.
We have a lot of good news on the agenda. Feel free to say, Rob.
Thanks for being with us.
We have a lot of good news and reports on the agenda, along with the reports that our student rep gave us. Next on our business would be committee reports that we've had, our personnel, our finance and facilities, Karen?
Yeah, thank you, Charlie. I also would like to extend my congratulations to Katenee. I know how hard your office works, and it's definitely something to be proud of that there are no recommendations, and it's unmatched by our audit. So, thank you and everyone in your office. And on the heels of that wonderful audit report, we began the budget cycle just before this meeting, the finance committee met, and began the initial steps towards building the 2022-2023 budget, and the board will be getting information as that progresses.
Thank you, Karen. Curriculum instruction, Dave?
Seven thirty.
Policy, Mike, I don't think they met, I know there's a meeting coming up on the 8th case, is that right? And what time is that?
Six thirty.
And the demographic study, is that?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, and that'll be in the teachers' conference room, Casey?
Yes.
The policy report, okay. Communications, Michelle?
No report.
Safety and security, Mike, rap report?
No report.
Liaisons, Karen, school boards?
Uh, yes. On January 28th, Board of Directors and a JSBA head. At that meeting, we recognized new and retiring board members. We talked a little bit about upcoming workshop for next October. It'll be October 24th, 25th, and 26th, and we are certainly hoping for an in-person event. There'll be some new activities. One of those will be a live streaming of programs so that the rooms are not too crowded. There'll be a health and safety station, there'll be an SEO resource area, and again, the dates are October 24th to 26th. In June of 2020, New Jersey became the first state in the nation to incorporate K12 climate change education, of course, content areas, when the state Board of Education adopted the 2020 New Jersey School Learning Standards. In response, NJSPA and Sustainable New Jersey joined forces to determine an appropriate plan for implementing these standards statewide. The result is a 35-page report, which details the key needs of districts implementing these standards, makes recommendations, and provides resources, and that report is expected to be released on Monday, February 7th. Some recommendations are for professional learning for education leaders and school staff, curricular resources, community-based climate change, and board of education support. Also, it's lame duck season, there's quite a bit of legislative activities, and just to highlight, a couple of the laws that were signed by the governor. One of them is addressing CTE teacher shortage, and this would eliminate the requirement to pass a basic skills test to become a career and technical education teacher as an alternative of prospective CTE teaching candidate can demonstrate basic skills, proficiency, and a matter to be determined by the Department of Education, and the bill is intended to alleviate the shortage of career and technical education teachers in the state's public schools. Another item of interest would be a law that the new special education unit would be created within the Office of Administrative Law and require an annual report, and the unit would consist of administrative law judges having experience in special education. There will also be, one more law that of interest is an API instruction, which requires school districts to provide instruction on the history and contributions of Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders as part of the implementation of New Jersey School Learning Standards in social studies. The, the one more law that was signed, anti-bullying law revisions, makes various changes to the state's anti-bullying law and improves harassment, intimidation, and bullying reporting and investigation. And that concludes my report.
Really an advantage having Karen on the executive committee now as vice president, and I think we get much more information from having her there than we would if we didn't have her there, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Orange County school was Michael Brown isn't here. I don't think they've met them. Educational services, Joe?
No report.
No report? Drug awareness?
No report next week.
Mindful athletics, we haven't met. Liaison, Cedar Hill?
On October 12th, the home and school met, and talked a little bit about teacher grant updates, speaking of light scholarship, dine and donate at Cenkarelli's and heart pizza. There's, they're planning a father-daughter event and a mother-son event. They're gearing up for a golf outing on April 30th. They went over their budget and just got some possible amendments to their bylaws.
Thank you, nothing from Millville Valley, Joe?
The next meeting is on March 8th.
Mason, Christine?
No report.
Woodmont, Mike?
We're met on January 26th. Talked about a few things, holiday fatigue, successful even with social distancing. Other fundraisers include dine and donates. They had one recently, they're hoping to have several more during the school year. Other funding fundraisers include Tricky Tray, Spiritware, and of course, the big fourth-grade project, which is fun here later in the year. And we discussed the fact that a good number of students were virtual for the first two weeks, and was, could have all the students back in class. Next meeting is in March.
Hi, Lizor, David?
Yeah, so they, they had a meeting last night. They talked a number of things, including the promotion ceremony. They are planning a promotion ceremony with no virtual option, but they will livestream it at this point, with their thinking, they're still planning it. They discussed the traffic flow around the school during drop-off. It is an issue, it's a safety issue. They've got to move all the kids in, and of course, with no virtual option for learning, there's a lot more kids coming in, so they do ask for cooperation during the drop-off period, make sure that you can get the kids out of cars and into the building safely quickly. They're starting their scheduling process. It's a little earlier than normal this year, but it's going well. They talked a little bit about some other activities going on at the school, including living lessons. They have 30 speakers so far, and they're looking to get a few more. And if any of my colleagues have not seen living lessons, I strongly encourage you to attend if it's allowed, it may not even be allowed for.
I don't think we're having any else, I guess.
It's not, not at this point, no. That's what they're saying, unfortunately, because it really is an amazing event. But speaking of living lessons, Montpel Education Foundation also had a little meeting, and they are, they were given grant applications to donate to living lessons, and they are considering which speaker they might support there, so it's, it's an activity that the MEF has funded every year, every opportunity they get, they value its contribution to the school tremendously. MEF is also considering, although they have, they're working on the details, to try to get scholarships yet to high school, probably around $500. They haven't worked out the details, but are considering that as well, as well as a couple of other grants from a couple of other schools. I don't think that they've spoken to the applicants yet, so I won't go further into that.
Thank you, David. High school, Michael or Michelle?
They're meeting for January, was rescheduled. It'll be on Tuesday, February 22nd, to present a budget and financial update, and we update some, you know, principal, the secretary and all the departments, and also talking about some end-of-year activities. Unfortunately, we won't be able to attend because we have a meeting, but we'll get all the updates, so we can report back.
Thank you, Michelle. Michael, I'm in there.
Charlie, can I just say, well, correct me, the Cedar Hill meeting was January 12th. I think, sorry? The Cedar Hill meeting was January 12th.
Thank you. Public participation is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board on any agenda items. Do we have anyone, has any question on the agenda items? Please come forward on the agenda items. An opportunity to answer non-agenda items, okay? What is it, ladies, going to wait till the end?
Yes.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Over.
Second move by Mr. Palmer, second by...
Second.
Okay. Any questions on J? Rather, I? J, there's no action. K? L? M? And I don't think we have any privacy at this point. All right, any questions on any of them? See none, roll, roll, roll. Mr. Swann, please.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Modra?
Yes.
Dr. Portolino?
Yes, except abstain on M1 number 19.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes.
Mrs. Fano?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Ms. Suckerman?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
There's no need for closed session. Item section Q, old business. Do we have any old business of the board?
Charlie, I would just like to, as you know, I signed us up to be a team for Relay for Life, which is June 11th. Registration's at 4 o'clock, right here at Michael Stadium. I already had the three board members join, each generously donating $100 or more, so I would encourage my fellow board members to continue those contributions. Last time we had a live event, the board of education came in second place as fundraiser team, so I'd like to see if you can hit that mark again. If you see any help registry, just let me know, otherwise, you will have to wait.
Karen, you say two, I thought I read that it began at four.
Four, did I say two?
Yeah.
Then I missed.
Four o'clock, okay.
It's four o'clock, yeah, sorry.
And the date of that was?
June 11th.
June?
11.
June 11th, okay. Section R, general board comments and new business? Do we have any general board comments and new business? Okay. Public participation is an opportunity for the public to ask questions, if they have any others that are not on the agenda. Please come forward if you'd like to be heard, with your comments, please. It's, tell us through the art girl, so the secretary can get it in a minute, so use the microphone also, please.
Hi, my name is Abby Seawald, and for those of you that may not know me, I'm senior at MCTS, and I'm the vice president of business at the MCTS theater company. With me today are senior extensionists Ben and Dato, the president of Montpel Theater Company, and then Ariana Diaz, who is the secretary of public relations. So, we came here today...
Can you hold that a little closer, young lady, that? On the bottom, I think?
So, we came here today regarding the mask mandate for the musical. The guidelines talk about several things that have specific provisions for the mask mandate, three of which I feel are important to highlight for the group here today. According to the executive order 251, the one our school currently follows, masks may be lifted when an individual has trouble breathing, when playing a musical instrument that would be obstructed when wearing a mask, or when a student is engaged in high-intensity aerobic activities. As I've seen and experienced myself, performing on stage, whether we are singing, dancing, or simply performing our lines in the voice of our character, wearing a mask makes this task nearly impossible to do without becoming out of breath. Many of us are having trouble breathing on stage, especially those that have complained due to their asthma. Regarding the rule about a musical instrument, singing is our musical instrument, meaning that it would be obstructing our ability to sing. Singing through the mask has been extremely stressful on our vocal cords. I've been trained to sing in a way that protects my voice, but as of this year, my fellow castmates and I have all felt the health effects of this. Straining our vocal cords to sing through masks can cause vocal nodules, which can cause permanent damage and require surgery. The final point is that musical theater is 100% a high-intensity aerobic activity. At high school, I participated in both sports and the show. I have found that I'm just as, if not more, out of breath and exhausted from our aerobic activities on stage as I would be after running in a typical game or practice of field hockey. According to the guidelines, masks may be removed when performing and put back on only when the segment concludes. I have talked to many of my cast members, and they are all willing to put masks on back on, when we exit the stage. We are all ready to figure out how to solve this, rather than just categorically saying no. Personally, I have already thought of a couple of solutions to follow the mask mandate for performers that may work. Please work with us so we can put on a show that does not require a mask, but also protects the safety of every person involved on and off the stage.
Thank you very much, ladies.
Hi, I'm just going to say a few more things. Again, I'm Santina de Benedetto. I am the president of the theater company. So, I would first like to thank Abby, my fellow senior officer, and I echo everything she says. And I'd also like to add, it appears that the theater company has been treated differently than the other groups that have events, games, et cetera, in the school after-school hours. For example, none of the sports teams have to wear masks, and they compete against teams from other towns... For example, none of the sports teams have to wear masks, and they compete against teams from other towns who also don't have to wear masks. The theater company is only asking for their small group of actors to be able to perform on stage far from the audience. As we all know, the end of the stage is well over six or seven feet from the first audience member. Whereas basketball or wrestling, the audience are less than two feet away from the players. We're sure everyone can understand how the theater company just wants to be treated fairly and given equal opportunities and the same consideration as any other school sponsored extracurricular activity. We are more than willing to work with you and find solutions to this problem, and we greatly appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said.
Hi, I'm Ariana Diaz. I'm also a senior, and I'm here with my friends Abby and Santina. I'm pretty much echoing the same thing because we do believe that we are being treated unfairly in more than one way, but more specifically the mask mandate as well. We are able to perform without masks as long as we socially distance, which, as we have been practicing ever since, we've been able to, we've been given us the opportunity to perform on stage, and we wish to further that. Don't get us wrong, we are so blessed to be able to even be back on stage. Yet, even with that, we have so many setbacks that we believe that when we see around the school with other activities, we are not treated fairly. The wrestling team, which is a high-contact sport, is able to basically be on top of one another without masks from other people, other teams. Yet, when we are around the same people every single day for hours on end, being protected and being safe, we can't do the same. In our minds, it makes no sense, but we understand you're trying to keep us safe, yet we still want fair opportunity. And we deserve to have our voices heard, which you are giving us the opportunity right now. And we thank you for that for your time.
Thank you. Great job. Very naturally done. Excellent.
Sorry, you clearly should have a mask. Could you have one of the masks? We can provide one for you.
Can you get one in? It's a terrible law. Can you get, can you get the mask, sir, please? Is there any other questions around the turn? Pardon?
Sorry, it's a law that you have to wear.
There's no law.
You think I'm a mouse? We provide.
Please do that, sir. Want to build it? You don't want to comply with all that.
If you really want to push the rule, you're not even socially distanced.
Excuse me. The time from our attorneys from the Department of Education.
Your attorney is an idiot.
There's no thing. No, I don't. Okay.
I'm here to promote.
Is there anybody else? Because I'm going to share in the meeting. And by adjourned in the meeting, sir, by adjourned in the meeting.
I'm here to promote the breathing post.
They're out of emotion. Oxygen, breathing.
And we're here all to breathe. But again, you can keep your thoughts.
Well, I assume that.
We really appreciate your posting this. Any comment? That's pretty mature, Tom. Any comment, please, if you'd like to receive this.
I was just, because you brought this, Mr. Vogel, I did.
Reclaiming my time is not your comment, it's my comment.
Well, I.
You didn't respond to the lovely ladies here, and you're not allowed to speak during my comment.
You gave a response to your comments, and you have shared those.
We don't ask for your response. Nobody's asking for your response.
Unfortunately, this information was posted yesterday. This was actually drawn, folks who are parents in the district received this as a school depost. And this did not reflect the entirety of the school depost.
I'm sorry, reclaiming my time. This is my time, not yours.
The school depost clearly stated that this was an exercise that would not have been necessarily performed in school. The first step was the exercise.
It's your school page. Please, please, stop. Stop your overtime, it's not. Sir, no, I'm not going to argue with you. That was in the email, wasn't it? No. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
No.
No. Do you have a motion to adjourn? No, you can't. File whatever you want. That's why I got the order.
No, you're, there's a, the board rules allow for when someone is, is.
Is what? Is what? You don't even know the word.
Is disrupting the orderly meeting. It's a, it's a, it's a party orderly meeting here.
None of us care. He's not disrupting us.
Sir, you always have time, what's given to you from the board.
Yes.
Out of respect, and you're disrupting and therefore by law.
You have, you failing to follow the law, which would.
There's no law. You keep saying law. You keep pressing law.
It's called a mandate, not law.
The court order on 250th.
Mandate of law. I have a motion to adjourn. So, in second, would you call the roll, please, Mrs. Slum, to adjourn the meeting?
That's what you do all the time. Shame. Just keep running away. Just keep running away. Shame, yeah. God forbid you stand up for these kids. You send this shit out, and then you won't even friggin' stand up for the children. You want to sit there and listen. You won't listen. You give him a hard time, you won't even let him speak. Who manages the social media accounts? We need to know.
Start the roll call to adjourn the meeting.
Renee, Renee does.
Start caring more about the kids' mental health.
Wait, when is Renee going to quit?
This is a suicidal child because of this shit.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes. You guys should all quit. I did me a bunch of jokes. I'm sensitive to you, but mostly you are a bunch of jokes.
Calling us your thoughts. We really appreciate your help.
No, you don't.
No, you don't. You don't give two shits.
You don't even listen to us.
You don't care.
We're not protecting the children.